Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We'll start with a roll call, please, by Madam Clerk.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rallos-Bergen?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here. If you'll all please rise, we have a flag salute tonight. Gentlemen?
Color guard, prepare to advance. Advance. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, prepare to post colors. Post the colors. Color guard salute. Two. Color guard, regroup. Color guard dismiss.
Well done. Thank you, gentlemen, well done. Tonight, our invocation is by Pastor Mark Hackbarth from the chapel. Mark, good evening. Nice to see you down here, sir.
It's nice to be here. Would you join with me as we pray? Father in heaven, we thank and praise you for this great city. We thank you for Palm Springs. We really believe, Lord, that you have a design and a purpose for this city. And we pray, Lord, very simply, that the leaders that you have positioned here would be instilled with a sense of purpose and of direction. Lord, I pray very simply that there would be a sense of love between them, that there would be a unity amongst them. And, Lord, in that leadership of unity and oneness, that literally would permeate our community, that we would be known as a community that comes together, that finds a common sense of loving and caring for one another. We pray, secondly, Lord, that there would be a strength of truth here in this community, that it would be first exemplified in our leaders, that they literally, Lord, would stand in rightness, that they would stand with courage for what they believe and what they know to be the truth. We pray, finally, Lord, that there would be wisdom, that it would be something that would permeate our city, but, Lord, it would begin with our leadership, that they would be wise, that very simply, as they would hear words spoken to them, as they would look not only to the present but to the future, that, Lord, you would give them wisdom to understand how to guide this city in a direction that is the best, Lord, not only for them, but for the people, for all of us. We really ask that, Lord, and we humbly submit ourselves to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mark. Tonight, we have a presentation, and I'm going to call to the microphone Harold Good, who is the Director of Procurement here for the City of Palm Springs. And we're going to acknowledge an award that Harold received and a somewhat humorous story that's attached to the award. Harold belongs to NIGP, which is the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing. They confer a Distinguished Service Award annually, and they did so this year in Portland, Oregon, in August. And Harold was overwhelmed to learn that he was one of three recipients of this year's award. The DSA, or the Distinguished Service Award, is NIGP's second highest award. It recognizes individuals who have provided extraordinary services to their entity, in this case, the city, their community, the institute, and/or the purchasing profession. Since the inception of this organization in the '50s, it has been their honor to bestow this on only 85 individuals, Harold being one of those selected 85. The story is that Harold was lured to a week-long convention under the guise of having to do with a presentation to bring the 2005 NIGP convention to Palm Springs. The convention location selections were narrowed from nine to two, and because Harold was able to be at this convention to meet and answer questions for the decision-makers, the short list now consists of Palm Springs and Albuquerque, New Mexico. A final decision was made in October, and it appears as though Palm Springs has a very good chance of securing said such convention. Now, although the NIGP board thought they had pulled off a surprising award ceremony for Harold, they were indeed the recipients of the surprise. It appeared as though Harold, after dealing with the selection issue, left the convention prior to receiving the award and returned to Palm Springs. His senior contracting specialist, Bruce Johnson, remained and was there, present at the convention, to receive the award on behalf of Harold. So Harold was the recipient, did the work of bringing the convention to at least this number-two position, hopefully securing it in October, but never officially got his award. So we thought we'd take time tonight to do so. It should be noted that the city council has known Harold, I think all of us have known Harold almost as long as we've served. We are indeed very proud of his work. He is professional in every way and sense of the word. Not only is Harold's work effective to attract new business to Palm Springs, especially that convention in 2003, but more importantly, he is recognized for his outstanding talents, and now they are recognized nationally. So please join us in congratulating Mr. Harold Good. I, of course, told Harold it was nice to see him here tonight to receive the award. Thank you for coming down.
I'd like to say that is most appropriate, I think, to have the award presented tonight because, indeed, it's a group award. And I think the award, to me more than anything else, acknowledges the commitment of Palm Springs as a city organization to excellence in procurement and contracting policy for a long time. It's gone over many councils, more than one city manager. And I would like to thank everyone involved for creating an environment where I can recruit, have been able to recruit and retain professional motivated and credentialed staff to be able to carry forward this process. And I think the whole city should be proud of this award because, indeed, it is a national award for the entire organization. Thank you very much.
Harold, the box, the box will get that home safely. See the brown box there? Yeah. That'll guarantee it getting home in one piece. I will now turn to Madam Clerk for a report on the posting of tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday, August 30. Tonight, the council did receive some additional materials at their desk that's concerning item two, and also a revised resolution for two and 14. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll turn to our city attorney, Mr. David Alshire, for a closed session report. Mr. Alshire?
The council adjourned in closed session. Real property negotiations, we gave a status report on negotiations with Spa Hotel. No action was taken. With respect to the items listed on Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park and the South Palm Canyon real property negotiations, those matters were not discussed. With respect to real property negotiations for the Palm Springs Tennis Center with Harold Mattner, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Concerning the visitor center, the John Westman Trailiesman acquisition, those items were not discussed. Under real property negotiations, we gave a status report concerning negotiations on acquisition of the property across the street from the convention center with Tom Suet, gave a status report, no action was taken. The item involving real property negotiations with Palm Springs Unified School District and Desert Health Care District was not discussed. The real property negotiations on the Fashion Plaza with John Westman were not discussed. Real property negotiations involving a lease of facility to the airline, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Concerning the undeveloped parcel at 1437 North Palm Canyon, that was not discussed. Litigation matters, the Desert Water Agency litigation matter was not discussed. We did give a status report concerning the Eldorado litigation matter. No action was taken. The exposure to two litigation matters was not discussed, and the personnel evaluation of the city attorney was discussed.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Alshire. For those of you in the audience that are standing, we have allowed for an overflow to be used in a large conference room, which can be accessed by going around and through the outside hallway. There's a television monitor in there and chairs available if you'd like to go in there. And when we get to the issue that's your concern, we'll allow ample time for you to come back if you wish to give a comment or testimony. So if you'd like to take use of that room for more comfort, please do so at this time, and we'll make sure you get noticed if, in fact, your issue is of concern. At this time, the Housing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, the Financing Authority have no business scheduled for tonight's meeting. We'll now adjourn as the city council and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Members of the agency, we have before us tonight a public hearing. First item is item A. It is Schlepp's LLC Star Canyon Resorts. And I'll ask for a staff report, please, from our city manager, Mr. David Reddy.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to add a caveat. We asked you to open the hearing, and we would like to postpone this for two weeks. Actually... Actually, open it and hold the meeting, and then I would ask that the action be postponed till the next meeting.
You keep the hearing open at this time for next two weeks?
Continue the hearing. And with that, if I could ask, actually, what I would like to ask is John Raymond to come forward, Director of Community and Economic Development, and give you the information in the detail. Thank you.
Need you, Mr. Raymond?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Actually, I was just going to say that. We'd like to open the public hearing and continue it for two weeks. I'll give the staff report at the meeting on September 18. So that concludes my report.
Council questions or comments? This is a public hearing on Schlepp's LLC Star Canyon Resort. Anyone here wishing to address the council during this public hearing, please come forward at this time. I have no cards before me requesting that opportunity. Does anyone here, please come forward? Very good. Seeing none, we will continue the hearing for two weeks' time, and we'll postpone action for two weeks. Council comments?
I just wanted to make a motion that we would continue it till the 18th.
There you go. It's formalized. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rallos-Bergen. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. We'll now turn to public comments for the Community Redevelopment Agency. We will have public comments later on in the agenda for the city council, and one wishing to address the public comments portion of the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Good evening. I'm here to talk, Frank Tyson, you have my name on file. I'm here to talk about the Ralph's Project proposed $350,000 subsidy for street improvements, including medium islands on Ramon and Sunrise. Now, I knew that those were conditions of approval for that project, but now I heard that the city apparently intends to do it as a capital project for the city, which basically means that the city is going to subsidize that project by $350,000 for the purpose of doing a street improvements and building of medium islands. As I say, I love medium islands, but I don't think it should come out of the city's pockets. You know, if there is money to be given away, there's a lot of people in town that need it. I mean, Joy Meredith of the Main Street told me that a lot of the merchants are having a terrible hard time on her block and are closing up businesses. I know that there are some hotels that need money to get fixed up so that the city can get some bed tax, like the Pepper Tree Inn and the old Biltmore. And it bothers me that a major developer and a major grocery corporation that have plenty of deep pockets are now going to be given leeway and basically be let out of their commitment for the tune of $350,000. As you know, I was very vocal when the Desert Shadows Project came up, and we gave the Desert Shadows $200,000, or near that much, even although the developers said they didn't really need the money. And the city was so intent on giving that money away that it went as far as committing a felony, as the city attorney well knows. So I think that I'd like the city council to be very cautious about giving our money away. I mean, there's a lot of need in this city. We, our budget is rising horrendously, and I don't think that the public will appreciate that. The word in the street, of course, is that if you have the right connection, you can get any money you want from the city all night. Don't think you want to perpetuate that myth, if it's a myth or if it's a fact for that matter. So please be cautious. Our budget is going up, has gone up in the last few years from about $35 million to $52 million. It's a lot of quick increase. And if you're keeping giving money away like this, then, of course, it's easy to bring up the budget. So please be considerate of the taxpayers in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Community Redevelopment Agency? Very good. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, turn to our legislative calendar. There is one item before us as the CRA. It is the Ramon and Sunrise Way Street Improvements. I'll turn to Mr. Reddy for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will ask Mr. Barakian, Director of Public Works and Engineering, to come to the podium. He's going to give you the details in the staff report regarding the infrastructure improvements regarding the new Ralph's store and shopping center. Thank you. David?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the agency, the item B concerns the Ramon Road and Sunrise Street improvements in the vicinity of the new Ralph's Center, includes street improvements and median improvements. The item is before the agency because the procurement ordinance requires, as you know, projects over $100,000 to have plans and specs approved prior to going to bid. This is kind of a unique case in that staff has just received the final landscape and irrigation plans just yesterday afternoon. And in fact, the plans have not been approved, and the specs are not complete at this point. The ordinance does allow for approval of the plans, and what we are asking tonight is that, in lieu of continuing it for about a week, at which time we expect plans to be, plans and specifications to be approved, we're asking if the agency would consider adopting and approving the plans and specs contingent upon staff approval of the details. This is the first time we've asked for it in that kind of unusual manner, but we're only doing it in order to see if we can save a couple of weeks' time. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Dave. Council questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
You mentioned the caveat being approval, or subject to approval on the landscaping and the specs by staff. Have they been reviewed by the Planning Commission?
I think Mr. Evans is going to have to answer that question, because I do not recall if they have the median landscaping.
The Planning Commission did look at the median island landscape plan. They recommended approval, subject to adding some trees, and we are finalizing the tree selection. There's only a portion of the median that actually has planting, so we're talking maybe one or two trees, not a whole lot. Most of it's, you know, fairly narrow because of the turning movements that we have to accommodate.
Is there a need in your mind that it needs to go back to planning, or did they leave it pretty much in staff's hands?
They left it up to staff. You know, it's a very, very small area. Yeah. And we've got a good landscape architect we're working with. It's a solvable issue. The rest of it's a very simple planting plan, so it's not overplanted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Other council questions or comments? Entertainer in action?
Remove the resolution.
Question for rule on Mr. Mills. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rallos-Bergen. Thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Hodges?
I'm going to be voting against this, not necessarily for the reasons that Mr. Tyson just said, but mainly because I'm not in favor of medians. The city of Palm Springs and medians don't get along too well. We don't seem to keep them up very well, and I don't think that they're totally necessary when you have streets that aren't wide enough to really accommodate them. So I personally will be voting against this.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Fully noted. Four one, it has passed. We'll now adjourn as the CRA and reconvene as a city council. First order of business for the city council is public comments. I have two comments before me, request for speak. Suzanne, I'm sorry, Lanny Swerdlo, followed by Suzanne Marie Weber. If you'd both come down, please, we'd appreciate it. Lanny Swerdlo? Very good. Welcome, sir.
Lanny Swerdlo, One Cardova Court, Palm Springs, California. I am here representing the Desert Pass Chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union. You have a recommendation by the Chief of Police for continued participation in the Inland Crackdown Allied Task Force. Not only is the name frightening, but what it does is frightening. With the lure of asset forfeiture, it uses the siren song of money for nothing to corrupt even the most progressive of governments. The ACLU believes that asset forfeiture laws violate the 14th Amendment and that it deprives the citizens of property without due process of law. Judge Jane Gray, Superior Court Judge of the State of California, has written, "The statutory scheme involving asset forfeiture is..." asset forfeiture is unprecedented in U.S. legal history. Not only can property be forfeited without a criminal conviction, it is estimated that about 80% of the people whose property is taken are not even charged with a criminal offense." In other words, property owners are presumed to be guilty. Never before in the history of U.S. jurisprudence has the burden been placed on individual citizens to prove their innocence. The U.S. Supreme Court has upheld asset forfeiture, saying that it is against the property and not the individual. But having your home, car, or business seized certainly seems like a punishment. Hopefully, this decision will be eventually reversed like the June 2002 decision declaring that it is unconstitutional to execute a mentally retarded individual, which reversed a ruling of 1989 that allowed such executions. Just because the Supreme Court upheld a bad law doesn't mean that you should embrace it. One would hope that as an ethical leader, you would oppose any government program, deny citizens the rights and liberties provided for in our Constitution. However, if you're loath to do the right thing for ethical and constitutional reasons, perhaps the bottom line might motivate you. The city of Palm Springs is a partner in INCA and receives 1/15 of all assets seized. When you receive benefits from a program, you are also liable for any losses. Newspapers constantly report bus gone awry where police break into the wrong house and either injure or kill someone. The victims of mistaken raids have obtained lawsuits totaling millions of dollars. INCA also makes extensive use of informants, and just last month, the city of Brea paid $1 million to settle a lawsuit for not providing adequate police protection to an informant who was murdered. Nowhere in this contract do I see either a hold harmless or an indemnity clause. The city of Palm Springs might very well be liable for any negligence or malicious actions taken by this agency. In addition, Palm Springs Police Officer Paul Abshire informed me that he no longer represents the city on the task force, and due to budgetary restraints, Palm Springs will not have a representative to INCA until January. So I see no need to rush to judgment and have the item decided included in today's consent calendar, along with fabric roofs and payroll warrants. I hope you realize this is an issue of significant concern that needs further discussion. I ask for at least one City Council member to pull this from the consent calendar to allow for additional research and citizen input. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Suzanne Marie Weber, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Suzanne Marie Weber. I represent the Libertarian Party Riverside County, desert area. Libertarian Party considers forfeiture of assets such a serious, serious issue that it's even included in their platform, and I'd like to give you just a couple of words from that. And that is, until such time as persons are proven guilty of crimes, their individual rights shall be accorded full respect. We support the repeal of all civil asset forfeiture laws, which assume that property has committed an offense and thus can be seized by government agents without due process of laws. We believe that no one should be denied their property as punishment for a criminal act unless convicted of a crime and then having a specific fine levied by the court. I support Lanny Swerdlo in his comments to you, and I would ask that you would consider tabling this until you've had more time to research it fully, before you commit your city to perform what I consider to be theft, because theft is theft, no matter whether you call it forfeiture of assets or confiscation, it is still theft. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the counsel during public comments?
I'm going to be like a dog with a bone, because I'm sort of concerned that...
Frank, we'll need your name, please.
Frank Tyson, address on record. I'm sort of concerned that none of you actually addressed this issue a little bit for the people of this city. You know, it's a little devious the way it reads here on the item, Ramon and Sunrise Way Street Improvements. Recommendation that the agency approves and adopts the planned specification, working details, and authorized advertising construction bids for the Ramon Road and Sunrise Street Improvement Program. No comment about the fact that this is going to cost the city $350,000 of the people's money. No comment about the fact, and I'd like to see a comment on that. Tell us what the story is, about the fact that these were conditions of approval for the project. I mean, Ralph's and the developer knew that this was going to, they have to do this. Why give it away to them? I just don't understand it. I don't understand why, first of all, I find it very devious. Tell people what really is going on. Be honest with us. Because then you worry, because there is a movement afoot to cut the utility tax in town. You say, oh, we need the money. The city's going to fall apart. Yet, how are you going to explain this to the people, that you're spending their money, but without even knowing it, on all giveaway to all kinds of developers that don't need it? And I really am concerned. And I really wish that you would honestly face these issues and tell us. Tell us, why do you give Ralph's this money? Why do you give these people's money away? Why? You know, I really would like to know, and I think they need to know, and everybody needs to know, because they're going to vote in November to cut the utility tax. And then you say, oh, we don't have any money to run the city. Well, if you give it away all the time, no wonder you have no money. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the counsel during public comments? Very good. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Counsel, any response to public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think a response should be in order. Maybe the city manager can, or the Mr. Evans can fill in the details as to why these medians are going in.
On which issue? The Ralph's or the INCA?
Whatever it pertains to.
The Ralph's?
Do the medians...
The medians. Okay. With that, I would ask Mr. Evans to address the specifics. Thank you.
And Mr. Evans, I'll ask you to clarify that this is not utility tax money. This is CRA money and how it is derived and how it can be spent. If we're going to be clear, let's be clear about all the facts.
Yes, the median islands were one of the requirements, one of the general plan. It's part of the city's overall street improvement program. It's a traffic control device, helps channelize traffic. There is some concern with potential conflicting driveways around this intersection, and Sunrise and Ramon Road are going to be one of the most heavily-used intersections in the community. The developer had a very lengthy approval process, a very lengthy entitlement process. As the council recalls, in response to community concerns, the city required an environmental impact report. We spent an extra year analyzing the project. The applicant carried the cost of that project, paid for that environmental document, a significant delay on their entitlement process. The issue of coming back and asking for agency assistance is something that in redevelopment project areas, capital improvements are really what those plans are put together for. Those plans are in place to assist developers in developing the lands. The money has to be spent on public improvements such as streets, sewers, median islands, things of that nature. It's a fund of money that's tax increment-driven, which means it's a percentage of the property taxes that are paid that go to the redevelopment agency, and the money has to be spent on these types of projects. The money is not part of the general fund. It cannot be transferred to the general fund. So these redevelopment project monies are really funds set aside for capital improvements, and we've used those types of monies for projects all over the community that everybody benefits from. I think that answers most of the question.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Would you please explain what CRA is?
Community Redevelopment Agency. It's an entity of the city that's been put together to help with redevelopment of blighted properties, properties that are underdeveloped. And the City Council sits as the redevelopment agency, and it's the same type of entity that virtually every city in the Coachella Valley has. We use the Community Redevelopment Agency relatively modestly compared to some of our neighboring communities where their entire city is a redevelopment project area.
So Palm Springs is not the only city that has redevelopment, redevelopment funds?
No, not at all. I mean, several of the cities in the Coachella Valley have redevelopment budgets that are equivalent to some of the largest cities in the state of California. And we are a very modest town when it comes to the monies we collect in the redevelopment agency and the types of projects that we develop. In most cases, we require developers to build improvements, and then we do a reimbursement over time from that tax increment. In this particular case, the agency in this area has some funds to assist with the capital improvements, in this case, the median islands and some of the street work.
Is this a statewide program?
Statewide program allowed by state law, and there are very few cities probably in the state that have not in the past or don't currently use redevelopment agency funds and programs exactly as this.
Now, what needs to happen in order for an area to be qualified or determine a redevelopment zone?
Well, we have to go through a very lengthy process to determine that the area meets the criteria under redevelopment law. We have to determine that the area is blighted. It has underdeveloped properties, substandard properties, physical problems for development such as substandard lot size, where you've got multiple property owners and you can't consolidate properties. We use it to abate code enforcement-type issues through taking those funds and reinvesting in private property, in some cases, rehabilitation programs. We don't just use the monies in Palm Springs for new development. We use it for existing development. And then a percentage of all those redevelopment funds have to go to low and moderate income housing, and you can't commingle those funds. And the city's had a very active housing program. We've been very successful over the years. Part of that success has come from the redevelopment agency.
Can you take redevelopment funds and use them in any other category?
You cannot transfer those funds to operational-type activities such as police, fire, maintenance, things of that nature. The redevelopment funds are really tied and focused in on only the things allowed by state law. And the items I just referred to, police and fire and maintenance-type activities, those are general fund activities, not redevelopment agency activities.
It was stated tonight that, you know, you take money and you give it away. Can you like take $350,000 and give it to a developer?
No, in this case, we're not giving it to the developer. What we're doing is we're building public improvements that everybody in the community gets to utilize. The city of Palm Springs is very, very cautious on its redevelopment agreements. And again, those funds need to typically be directed towards public improvements and activities as opposed to just the profit-loss margin for a development project. And in this case, it's clearly for capital facilities.
Mr. City Manager, how is this project connected to the utility tax?
Actually, it's not.
It is.
That's the right answer.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's very easy for people to use this bully pulpit to say all manner of things that are inaccurate and inflammatory. And what's really interesting is that, you know, some projects are designed to specifically strengthen the community so that it increases our tax base and that services that we have are there for the community. And it's just interesting sometimes how some things that are said here, because sometimes even the faces become familiar. Whether it's to build low-income housing or perhaps to bring a business into the community, and you hear the same thing. And yet, this is America, and we do have the right to ask questions. But I think we also have a responsibility to listen. And when we ask for the truth, accept the truth. It's nothing more than that, just the truth.
Any additional counsel comments?
I will give you one point of clarification. The speaker indicated why not give money to some of the businesses downtown or some of the hotels. There's where I think I'd have a big problem. The idea of taking city money to help an individual business to become more profitable would have a bigger question mark than any action we have ever taken. All the monies that are being spent on the proposed item tonight before the agenda are in the public right of way. They are public improvements for the community. They are there with the intent of helping businesses to grow, but we're not building their buildings nor improving their particular buildings. The intent is to provide greater services for those who want shopping and hopefully derive greater sales tax revenue, which could then translate into greater services. I ask you not to be confused with certain funds that are somehow magically by some irrelevant, if not erroneous nexus connection between that funding source and this proposed utility tax measure before you on the ballot. They are two very different and distinct pools of money. You cannot fund this project with the same kinds of funds. It is extremely misinforming you and the public that have heard that comment. You have before you five elected officials that are hereby the choice of majority, and every one of us has very different opinions, but what we do agree on is what is in the best interest of this community. And we fight whenever we have to, sometimes for issues and sometimes against ourselves, but the goal is to improve the great city of Palm Springs. And any action we're taking, I assure you, is of the highest degree of integrity and with the greatest forethought. This issue before you tonight is not something that was done flippantly. This has been analyzed for quite some time. Please don't let this whole issue be confused any further than it already is. You are here tonight because we have been fighting for an issue that all of you have thought was important to you, and we have stood helping you to fight an issue. And that's the nature of this City Council. That's the nature of this City Council.
And with that, let us now turn to the approval of the consent calendar. I will ask that item 12 be considered to be removed inasmuch as we have continued item A off of the CRA. I'll need concurrence.
And number 11 as well. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll pull 12 and 11, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that you also pull number seven.
Pull item seven at the request of Mr. Oden. Thank you. Any additional comments? Any abstentions?
I need to abstain on a warrant, 979-337, husband-related.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I'd like to pull items two and three, which are hooked together, just really for an explanation of the revision to the resolution we just received. And also, I'll be abstaining on number six and on three warrants. 979-204, 979-348, 979-351, business-related.
Thank you. Any additional comments? At this time, we will be pulling item two and three at the request of Mr. Mills. Item seven at the request of Mr. Oden for separate discussion and vote. Items 11 and 12 have been removed from the consent calendar. With the remaining items before you, I'll ask for a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Rallos Spurgeon and second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call by Madam Clerk.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rallos Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is five oh. It's deemed unanimous. Item two and three, Mr. Mills, at your request. How do you want to handle that? Do you want to ask questions or full staff report?
A question would be all that would be needed.
Please.
On the resolution, there's a note that we received this evening. There's a note that says revision is dropped in price by $40,000 by eliminating alternate A. Could someone explain that to me?
Yes, I can. Apologize for the encrypted note. The original staff report that you had before you requested that when you award the contract, you included alternate A. That was a mistake on my part. Alternate A was the addition of a hydraulic gate system to be installed. We want the electric gate system. The electric gate is part of the base bid. And so in this case, we do not want you to award, we want you to award the base bid without the alternate. Thus, the change in the...
Now, is that alternate, it's, you're saying A, but are you really meaning one?
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm really meaning one.
And that's 140?
That's correct, but there was also another line item in there for $100,000 that we were going to swap out, so there was a $40,000 difference. Apologize for the confusion.
That answers my concerns, Mr. Mayor.
Is that both on two and three, Mr. Mills?
Yes, it was really on the one, but they went together.
All right. I'll ask for a motion then.
So move.
Second.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rallos Spurgeon and second by Mr. Mills. All those in favor say aye. No, I'll ask for a roll call.
I just need a clarification. Is that for items two and three?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rallos Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's deemed fair, deemed unanimous. Item seven, Mr. Oden, I believe those pulled at your request, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to request that this be looked at a little closer by legal, and perhaps before it returns to us. We have a committee, the Police Advisory Committee, the community as well as police officers, that that might be a good place for screening process for this before it comes back before us.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hodges.
Also, Lanny, when he was up at the podium, also said that the policeman was not going to be taking, starting until January 1st, which I found kind of interesting.
Our representative.
Our representative. So if we could just have a little bit more clarification on this, it would be appreciated.
Would you like that now, Councilwoman?
Well.
On the personnel side, the other thing, we can go ahead and get into the process. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Your motion by Mr. Oden and a second by Ms. Hodges to continue this for further legal and further work with the advisory committee and questions on the representative. All those in favor say aye.
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 You opposed? It's 5-0, deemed unanimous. Does that complete the work on the consent, Madam Clerk? Very good, thank you. That now turns us to Item 14, which is a public hearing. This is TTM 28087, James F. Goldstein, otherwise known as Eldorado. Ask Mr., ready for his staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would yield to the city attorney, Mr. Alshire, for the staff report on this hearing. Thank you.
And of course, since Bill Winder has spent most of his professional life working on this subject over the last, I think it's two decades, I will.
I have two children yet to go, Mr. Mayor, so if we can just keep, bear with me here. We'll get all these children raised thanks to the good folks in Eldorado.
Before you begin, sir, are there anyone here in the audience who would like to acknowledge the work of Mr. Bill Winder?
Thank you, sir.
I think you're on your side so far.
Very good. You know, Mr. Alshire is right. When we were engaged to be your city attorney back in 1990, the very first assignment I got was an Eldorado rent control assignment. And I've been working on rent control in Eldorado ever since, so.
The first assignment has taken 10 years to solve.
That's right. On occasions, you know, we reach critical milestones in the history of important events in this community. And tonight, to some extent, it is my sad duty to report to you a milestone event that's about to occur here tonight. And before I do that, I'd like to refresh the council and the community's recollection as to what brings us here today, tell you a little bit about litigation history. I really feel like the people that need to be commended here tonight of the council for its courage in attempting to craft a middle ground that would be reasonable and protect the seniors that live in this community and who love this park and who have spent many years in it, and the landowner who has a legitimate interest in realizing the reasonable expectations of his investment. For a number of years, the landlord and the Mobile Home homeowners association have done battle in the rent control arena in this community. This community overwhelmingly passed two rent control measures designed in part to protect seniors who live on fixed incomes. And mobile home parks are probably the best illustration of how rent control can work in a proactive manner to protect the lifetime investments of seniors who've worked and raised families and now have the right to retire in reasonable comfort and in economic security. We live in a time when it's difficult to assure any of our economic security, but the Palm Springs Rent Control Ordinance has, in my opinion, worked very effectively to provide a sense of security in this appropriate environment. Some years ago, the mobile home park owner indicated a desire to convert this mobile home park from a landlord-tenant form of ownership to a resident form of ownership. There is a statutory scheme in the state of California which is specified by state law, not by municipal law, that has to be complied with. One of the steps in that process is that the landowner, as an applicant, must obtain a tentative tract map, in this case at least, an appropriate subdivision map act, in this case, a tentative tract map, from the local legislative body, in this case, the city council. That process went on for a number of years before the application was deemed final and processed by your staff, brought to the planning commission, and ultimately brought to the city council. The city council and the community recognizes that, and will recall that by the time this matter came before the council, we had high hopes of reaching an agreement and an accord for the orderly and wholly supported unanimously-supported conversion of this park to resident ownership. In fact, two members of this council volunteered and were assigned to personally intervene on behalf of the mayor and the council in an effort to encourage an agreement that would be in accord with the interests of all of the parties. Regrettably, that did not happen. And so, the council, in its wisdom and with our full legal concurrence, crafted a plan by which it desired to level the relative economic bargaining positions between the two sides. And when tentative tract map number 280087 was first considered in July of 2000 and ultimately approved with conditions of approval, the council placed three very important conditions of approval, which, in my judgment, were very visionary in the sense that it assured the greatest likelihood that the conversion of this mobile home park would occur in fact. And that the conversion statutory scheme which exists in state law would not be either inadvertently or deliberately used to secure for the owner of the property a lifetime exemption from rent control without any real conversion of ownership in fact. Council approved tentative tract map number 28087, and litigation followed. The applicant was unhappy with three of the numerous conditions of approval, and we ended up in litigation. We were successful in persuading the Riverside County Superior Court of the reasonableness of the council's decision. The matter went up to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals has, in essence, disagreed with the decision made by the council. What is interesting about the Court of Appeals' opinion, and I want to talk to the council a little bit about that in some detail, is that the court was sympathetic to the council's concerns. The court actually acknowledged and in effect gave the council credit for attempting to craft conditions of approval which would assure the likelihood that this mobile home park would convert in fact. What the Court of Appeals concluded was, notwithstanding the good intentions of the city council and the creativity of the council in trying to fashion an appropriate tract map approval, the council's authority exceeded that allotted to it by state law. And the Court of Appeals saved its harshest criticism for the state legislature by essentially saying, "We appreciate what the council's trying to protect the residents of the community from, and we recognize that other courts have acknowledged that that's a legitimate concern, but unfortunately, this statutory scheme doesn't permit that." And I'd like to read what I think is a salient provision of the opinion of the Court of Appeals. And I'm going to quote now. "At oral argument, the city argued that the three further conditions it imposed were designed to prevent an abuse of the conversion process by a developer who was engaged in a sham or fraudulent transaction, which was intended to avoid the rent control ordinance. The problem with this argument is that Section 66427.5 subdivision D provides that the scope of the hearing before the city council shall be limited to compliance with the section. Thus, the city lacks the authority to investigate or impose additional conditions to prevent sham or fraudulent transactions at the time it approves a tentative or parcel map. Although the lack of such authority may be a legislative oversight," and here's the most telling language, "and although it might be desirable for the legislature to broaden the city's authority," and that, I think, is without dispute, "it has not done so. As discussed further below," and I'm moving on in my quotation, "conversion of the mobile home park occurs on the date that the first subdivided unit is sold. If, as in Donahue," and this was another Court of Appeals case that we relied on heavily in our argument, "conversion fails and no units are ever sold, Section 66427.5 cannot be used to evade local rent control. We also agree with Donahue that the section may not be used to justify preemption of local rent control if conversion is unsuccessful." Then there's an important footnote, and here's the text of the footnote. "The statute does not specifically protect against sham or failed transaction, a sham or failed transaction in which a single unit is sold but no others, and the park owner then claims a local rent control ordinance is preempted by Section 66427.5 subdivision B. However, as Donahue illustrates, the courts will not apply Section 66427.5 to a sham or unsuccessful conversion." So in effect, the Court of Appeals said to the city council and to your legal council, "We understand your legitimate desires. We recognize that those desires may even be legislatively desirable. Unfortunately, the legislature hasn't given you that authority, and that may be a legislative oversight. But we want to make one thing perfectly clear. While you may not condition the approval of a tentative tract map to prevent a sham or fraudulent or failed conversion from occurring in fact, it is very clear that this Court of Appeal, like the Donahue Court of Appeal, will not allow the conversion statutory scheme under state law to be used either intentionally or unintentionally to secure for a landowner a lifetime exemption of rent control without the park converting to resident ownership in fact. In effect, what the court said to the city is, 'You're going to have to monitor this conversion carefully, and if, in light of the opinion of the Court of Appeals, facts and other evidence come to light which suggest that this conversion has failed, was undertaken for a fraudulent purpose, or is a sham to secure a lifetime exemption of rent control, come back to this court, and we will make certain that that does not occur.'" Now, the Court of Appeals also issued a final order which brings us here tonight, and that is the ultimate decision of the court, which reads as follows, and again, I'm quoting. "The case, that is tentative tract map number 28087, is remanded with directions to require the Palm Springs City Council to promptly determine the sole issue of whether the applicant's application for approval of a tentative parcel," and that was an error, it should be tract map, "complies with Section 66427.5. If so, the Palm Springs City Council should approve the application. If not, the city council should specify the grounds of non-compliance, and the trial court should retain jurisdiction to review the issue of compliance in further proceedings." Some have asked, "Why are we having this hearing at this time when many of the snowbirds are not able to be with us because it's still the heat of the summer and they're off in other locations, and we normally, you normally, don't want to hold these kinds of hearings until we can get maximum representation from the affected residents here?" The simple matter is that the Court of Appeals didn't give us that option, and we were ordered to promptly determine the outcome. And the trial court, in issuing its writ of mandate, commanded that that consideration occur on or before tonight's council meeting. That's why the matter's on before you tonight. Now, what are the council's options? We have prepared for you a proposed resolution reconsidering and reapproving tract map number 28087. We have revised that resolution and its attached conditions of approval in light of correspondence that we have received from legal counsel for the applicant. The legal counsel for the applicant, in his letter dated September 3rd, objected to three aspects of the proposed resolution. And I want to review them with you and make sure that the council has revised Agenda Item 14C in front of it. Legal counsel objects to the precatory language of the various whereas-recital clauses of the resolution and requests that they be removed. We don't agree with that. We believe that we have the right to recite the Court of Appeals' opinion as we best understand it, and we respectfully disagree with legal counsel's characterization that our recitals are inaccurate. Condition 14 of Exhibit A to the resolution reconsidering and reapproving the tract map did in fact include conditions of approval which the Court of Appeals specifically struck down as beyond the statutory authority of the city council. Its inclusion in the original draft of the resolution that came to you was an error on my part. I thought it had been deleted in fact, and we have deleted Condition 14 of Exhibit A. The last comment from legal counsel was the language of Section 8 of the resolution. Section 8 of the resolution is in effect an express retainer of jurisdiction or right of cause of action under the opinion of the Court of Appeals in Eldorado Palm Springs Limited versus City of Palm Springs, 96 Cal App IV, 1153, that makes certain that a city has a right to take such remedial action as is consistent with the Court of Appeals' opinion in the event of a sham, failed, or fraudulent conversion of the park. The draft language of proposed Section 8 was objected to by legal counsel. Mr. Close suggested language which would be acceptable to his client. In consideration of that language, we felt comfortable in recommending it to you. We think it is a fair recitation of the authority conferred on the council by virtue of the opinion of the Court of Appeals, and it does reserve to the city the right to institute court proceedings in a court of competent jurisdiction to adjudge the conversion a sham if in fact the conditions to such a cause of action exist. So we have, in large measure, adopted his proposed language with one change, and that is, he was requesting final determination by a court of competent jurisdiction. We have destruck the word "final" out because in my opinion, if a Court of Appeals were to rule that this conversion were a sham conversion, we think that the council would have such rights and remedies as would be afforded to them under law, notwithstanding the fact that a petition for review may be pending in a higher court. Under the proposed language of counsel, a final adjudication would require exhaustion of potentially every appellate remedy, including an appellate remedy to the United States Supreme Court, which we think is unwarranted and inappropriate. The conditions of approval of the map are as they existed in September of 2000 with the three conditions of approval which the council crafted and added, eliminated on the grounds that the Court of Appeals had concluded that while such conditions may be desirable, they were not authorized by the enabling statute. While we accept the Court of Appeals' opinion as the governing law of this case, with respect, we continue to disagree with the court's opinion, but we believe the council is obligated to follow that opinion. That means, then, that the only avenue open to the council tonight would be to conclude that the tenant impact report fails to meet the requirements of state law. We do not believe that such a finding can be made, and we believe, in light of the opinion of the Court of Appeals, that the council's only option tonight will be to open the public hearing, take public testimony, and we recommend that you adopt the resolution in the modified form that has come to you tonight. Now, before I close my report, I want to tell you what we are attempting to do on a legislative front. Fortunately for this community, there are others who have seen the opinion of the Court of Appeals in Eldorado who have been shocked and concerned by the opinion and who have determined to try to undertake a legislative remedy to that opinion. Recently, AB 930 was introduced, and the mayor wrote letters recommending adoption of this legislation. It has now been, as I understand it, passed by both houses and is pending on the governor's desk for signature or veto. It is a very small baby step in the process of correcting what is clearly It is a very small baby step in the process of correcting what is clearly a flaw in the statutory conversion process, specifically a flaw in Section 66427.5. AB 930, in its current form, assuming that it becomes law, will require that in future conversion applications and subdivision map approvals by a local governing body, that the applicant will need to, at a minimum, conduct a poll by which it can ascertain and then report to the legislative body the support or lack of support for the conversion and the numerical strength of that support or lack of support. This is a much watered-down version of the original legislation, in our opinion. Further legislation is needed, but we hope the governor will sign this legislation. It is, in our opinion, a baby step forward, but clearly, 66427.5 needs to be further amended to vest in local governing bodies the power to level the relative economic playing field between the parties, especially where the conversion is opposed by the local homeowners groups or homeowners associations and where the conversion will actually occur, if at all, over their objection, the point of which is that local legislative bodies must have the authority to assure that the terms and conditions of conversion that will be imposed on any subdivision map act will assure a bona fide conversion, in fact. Assuming that the council adopts the recommendation of staff and following the public hearing of this matter, we intend and we will make you a promise that we will carefully monitor this conversion. We have our doubts about how bona fide the conversion is, but we want to give everyone the benefit of the doubt. We hope and pray that this conversion results in tenant ownership, in fact. We thought that what the council did before would facilitate that. Unfortunately, we're not able to continue to impose those conditions. But we, as the city attorney's office, commit to you to report back to you promptly if we see any of the indices about which the Court of Appeals express concern and advise you as to what your rights and remedies are. And obviously, those who have the most interest in being vigilant about this conversion and assuring that it is a bona fide conversion, in fact, are the homeowners and homeowners association. So with that, members of the city council, it is our legal opinion that the resolution before you meets the requirements of the Court of Appeal's opinion, that, under the terms of the Court of Appeal's opinion, the obligation of the council now is to conduct a public hearing and adopt this resolution. And with that, I will conclude my staff report and be pleased to answer questions.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, you've heard staff report. Do you have questions on it before we open the public hearing? Good. Seeing no questions from counsel, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on Item 14, the tentative tract map 28087, James F. Goldstein, Eldorado. I will call the first three request-to-speak cards, and then after that, I'll ask anyone wishing to address the council to come forward. First speaker is Milton Flack. Good evening, sir. You'll have five minutes. There's a clock, I believe, in front of Mr. Oden and one in front of me. It counts down from five.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, council persons, good evening. I believe this is the third or fourth time that I've appeared here. My name is Milton Flack, and I reside at 167 Yucca Drive within the Eldorado Mobile Home Park. I am the president of the Eldorado Mobile Homeowners Corporation, that is the resident homeowners association for the Eldorado residents and has been in existence since 1983. Since its inception, the association has appeared on behalf of the residents before numerous rent control and conversion proceedings and court actions. I wish to express our appreciation for the efforts rendered by the mayor, the city council, the city attorneys, and staff in their efforts to maintain the reasonable rents under the Palm Springs rent control ordinance. Just as a matter of interest, I would ask all of the residents who are here from Eldorado, please raise your hand. As you can see, and has been at other proceedings, there's a great interest as to what occurs. This evening, Association Vice President Douglas Koltis and Mr. John Neat, a well-recognized, certified real estate appraiser, will address you on behalf of the residents. You have been furnished with copies of Mr. Neat's statement and both my and Mr. Douglas Koltis' statements. Also, a legal memorandum by our attorney, William Constantine, who, along with Robert McFadden, represent our association. Mr. Constantine is unable to appear this evening. However, before Mr. Neat and Douglas Koltis speak, I would like to very briefly refer to the Court of Appeal's decision, which brings us before the council meeting this evening. Much of what I have said in my statement has already been said by Mr. Winder. However, for the record, I will continue with my statement. To me, one of the most significant portions of the decision is where the court stated that the courts will not apply the law to sham or failed transactions in order to avoid local rent control. When does a transaction become a sham or a method to avoid local rent control? In my estimation, the answer is when the price per lot or the market rent offered by the park owner is so high as to become exorbitant or unaffordable. As you are aware, Eldorado is a senior park and provides affordable living to the Palm Springs residents. The principal issues that were involved in the conversion proceedings are the price per lot, market rent, and the termination of rent control. The park owner has made it very clear that the residents would be informed of these prices only after the city has approved the conversion. Tonight, Mr. Neat will disclose the result of his survey. Any lot price or market rent greatly in excess of the amounts disclosed tonight by Mr. Neat will only support and enforce the district court's prohibition that the courts will not apply the law to a sham or failed transaction for the purpose of avoiding rent control. Mr. Constantine in his legal memorandum proposes action that the City of Palm Springs may take and still comply with the court order. I have reviewed Section 8 referred to by Mr. Winder and ask that it be adopted. Again, I thank you, on behalf of our residents, for the actions that have been taken, in particular, Mr. Winder and the city attorney, for the actions that they have taken over all these years. Thank you very much.
Mr. Douglas Koltis, please.
Good evening, sir. My name is Doug Koltis. I live at 361 Club Circle Drive, which is part of Eldorado and a vice president of homeowners association. Been a long, a lot of years, hadn't it? Long time. Well, it's still to be determined. We won't, we won't give up. Nobody gives up. Thing I want to do also is, over the years, we've dealt with most all people, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff members, some come and go, but we've dealt with everybody. And, you know, I cannot tell you that I've ever dealt with any of the city employees at any level that we have not been treated with respect, with courtesy, and with concern. And that's been throughout the tenure of years that I've been doing this, and we thank you very much for that, all of you. I'd like to comment just briefly on what Mr. Winder said about what's going into Sacramento, and that is an important thing, even though it's a baby step. And a lot of that work has been done through Eldorado, through our attorney, Ann Mori Priest, who is the attorney for the Mobile Homeowners League Association. A lot of that has been done. This bill was championed by Senator Keely. It was actually written by Senator Keely and championed by Senator Joe Dunn. People within California, we've heard the reference to a sleeping giant. This is really, the old folks are out there, man. I mean, they are doing things, and they are going to protect themselves. A baby step, yes. And Eldorado had a lot to do with that. This is good stuff, you know? Out of everything you think might be bad, and that's to be determined, a lot of good stuff happens, and if you look for the good, it's there. Next thing, on the local standpoint, we've had a lot of activity on local ordinances, and I'm sure all of you have heard of it, you've seen it, you've seen the legal arguments. Cities are waking up and saying, maybe we should do this. Maybe the timing's bad for Palm Springs. Maybe the timing's bad for somebody else. This needs to be done. Legal arguments are good. We have mobile home parks. The City of Rancho Mirage is doing this, and they're well on their way to doing it, with Mayor Gerber and all the council members. They're looking at it, and I would expect that that ordinance will be passed by the end of this month at the latest. Palm Desert is waking up. Indio's waking up. There's a lot of mobile homes, a lot of seniors to be protected. That's another level, and I think it's something that we all should look at. But most of all, I want to thank the City of Palm Springs, and you know, these people from Eldorado have been so supportive of us. They've gone with us. Some disagree. Most of them agree. You won't find better folks than you see sitting right out there. And I know the decisions are tough. I know it's thin. I know you don't have a lot of room to move in, but just vile candioussen. Thank you very much.
Mr. John Neat, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Neat. I'm a certified, state-certified, real estate appraiser and a member of the Appraisal Institute. You have a copy, a full copy, of my qualifications, so I'm not going to go into them there. My firm was retained by the Eldorado Mobile Homeowners Corporation to do two things. First, to estimate the market value of the individual home sites that would be offered under a condominium regime. The second was to estimate what the market space rental rate would be in a free and unfettered market. Let me walk you through both of them real quickly. In determining what the individual condominium lots would be valued at, we had to do what is known as a hypothetical valuation, simply because we do not have all the details. They've not all been provided at this point in time, and so we had to make certain assumptions. Primarily, we assumed that this would be a condominium regime like others with mobile home parks throughout the state and that there would be typical protections for lenders and all of the other things that make these marketable units to be sold. In attempting to ascertain what their market value is, we reviewed a number of transactions here in the Coachella Valley involving vacant lot sales, PUD and condominium sales existing in mobile home parks, sales of improved properties where someone comes in and buys both the home on the site and the condominium or PUD interest, and just about every transaction that we could find. It is a somewhat muddied market because of this difference in purchasing the home, purchasing the site. There's some room for different things to happen, and so, as a result, the picture's not always clear. But based upon our research, we estimated that the market value of the sites under these hypothetical conditions, which are stated in the report, would be $55,000 at this time. We also, as part two of our assignment, we also were asked to look at what market rent would be. Now, I want to just make a quick clarification because this is different than the market rent or the so-called average rent that we might discuss during a rent control hearing, where the surveys are limited to spaces that are under rent control or spaces that are located in the same city. What we're looking at is a true overview of the market, and in this case, because rent control is a fact of life in virtually, I think, just about every city in the Coachella Valley, as far as mobile home parks go, to determine what is real market rent outside of rent control, we really had to rely most heavily on the parks that are located on Indian leased land to determine that because they are not subject to rent control, and of course, there is a negotiation process that goes on. Based upon our review of that, oh, just to let you know, we also did include both senior limited, senior 55-plus limited parks and age unrestricted parks in the survey. Based upon the survey, we concluded that the appropriate market rent for the spaces in the subject would be $550 a month, and that is based upon the current expense arrangement in there. Let me just, before I say that for the public record, I want to make sure that I quote myself And that is inclusive of water and trash services. That pretty much concludes what we were asked to do. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'll sit down.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on Item 14? If you could ask all those who wish to testify to please come down and form a line, it'll move things along quite a bit quicker. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? Please come forward. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Latifah Klitzner, and I am a resident of Ramone Mobile Home Park, which is under rent control, and I'm here this evening in support of the people that reside at Eldorado. This is a real concern for us. I am a little nervous, but I must say that this so-called conversion, to me, is to avert rent control, and I see that happening. I was very concerned when KK passed in this town. It really bothered me. However, I don't know much. I'm sure you've done everything you can do, but maybe you can try even a little harder to help these people because without rent control, many people will find it will be economic bankruptcy. I, and that's all I want to say, and I want to thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sue Lofton. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant. For the record, we reincorporate Mr. Matt Close's comments regarding the whereas's. We request that the word "finally" be put back into Section 8. Determination could be made, could be deemed on a TRO. It's not clear from this language without something additional. Thirdly, I appreciate the long history that was given regarding, by your city attorney, regarding how we all got here. I do want to remind everyone, however, that initially, in 1993, Mr. Goldstein was approached by the residents and by the city to participate in a feasibility study, which he did, and then he was requested to go forward and to work toward making this a conversion. Lastly, with regard to all of the comments that have been made that this has been, is, or was intended to be anything other than a bona fide conversion, we strongly object to all of those comments. With that, we request that you pass the appropriate resolutions in compliance with the appellate court. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Pat Bell, and I'm representing Indian Springs Homeowners Association, also owned by Mr. Goldstein. We're here to support Eldorado tonight, and I have to tell you, I'm most impressed at the way that you have received Eldorado Homeowners Association and are so concerned with their problems. I hope, and I hope you're hoping, that we meet with the same response when we meet with the Palm Desert City Council. Thank you.
Can I ask? Anyone else wishing to address the council? Again, this is a public hearing on this issue?
I feel in democratic society, everyone has got to get as due, as Mr. Oden always says, and I hate to be made a fool out of. I think none of you addressed the real crucial issue. Why did Rels, who was...
Sir, sir, I'm going to cut you off. This is a, this is a public hearing dealing with tentative tract map for Eldorado.
I understand, but where do I get my... I do to rebut your... To the public!
I appreciate that, sir, but that is not the issue before the council at this time.
It's a public comment issue.
No, sir, it is a, it is a public hearing on a specific issue.
There's public comments on there, if you take a look at it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this specific issue? This is a public hearing on item number 14. Sir, I'll ask you to please step down. This is not the appropriate time. I appreciate that, sir, but this is not the appropriate time. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on item 14? We're trying to deal with the issue of the Eldorado Mobile Home Park. Anyone else? Thank you all for coming down on your public comments. We'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Winder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we may, just so that we've got a clean and complete record tonight, we want to make sure that the following documents are made a part of the record of the evidence of this proceeding. They would be the transcribed statement of Mr. Milton Flack, the transcribed statement of Mr. Douglas E. Koltis, the legal memorandum of the Eldorado Mobile Home Country Club Homeowners Association in support of the requested action, which has been submitted tonight, and the complete transcript appraisal dated August 30, 2002, under the signatures of John P. Neat and Tim, I won't even try to pronounce that last name, with its attachments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And if I could request, since it wasn't listed, I wanted to make sure that the letter from Melvany &amp; Myers...
Yes, thank you. And we should add to that, the letter dated September 3rd, a two-page letter addressed to me from Mr. Matthew W. Close of the law firm of Melvany &amp; Myers.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Counsel, comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I know what we did was right. We made the right decision two years ago. Regrettably, legislation is not such to back us up. So that's what we've got to work on. That's our next project. We need to work on the legislature to get it so this cannot happen again to another mobile home park, or maybe to this one, if this particular transaction doesn't go through. Hopefully, if it does, it will be very beneficial to all of you. And that's the ultimate goal. And I do hope that it is.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I would just like to ask a question of Mr. Neat, if he could step to the mic for a second.
Yes, sir.
In your appraisal, when you're mentioning the average market space rental value, are you including a projected HOA fee in there? Or if not, what would you project that to be? Or have you looked at that?
No, the answer to your question is in order. No, it does not include a projected HOA fee. And the second answer is, no, we did not look at that. That is something that requires a fairly exhaustive study to do that.
Okay, thank you.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the revised resolution, 14C.
Thank you.
Second?
Second by Mr. Mills. Perhaps I should rephrase it. Maybe it's not the pleasure of the council, but what is the action of the council?
Right.
There's a motion to move that which is before it by Ms. Hodges and second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments at this time? I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
If I may, please, Mr. Oden?
I would agree. I believe that we made the right decision, and the law is wrong. And we can work on changing the law. But that's in the future, and other people potentially will benefit. I can appreciate the fact that some say that this is not a sham. And maybe it isn't. But if it looks like it... Need I say more? I have had the opportunity in my life to take a position on things at times when I thought the law was wrong. And sometimes I saw those things change, and it wasn't overnight, and I had to perhaps suffer my blows or my wounds for those decisions. And I don't think I've changed that much. I think if anything, perhaps it has just strengthened my resolve. If it's right, it's right. If it's wrong, it's wrong. Clearly, we made the right decision. And it is true, the courts say you should do this. But the law is wrong. And I, you know, I was listening and calling on my spiritual forces and saying, what should I do? And for me, I, this is wrong. I can't do it. So I will be opposing this.
Otherwise, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
No.
Ms. Rels Burgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes for one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for doing a difficult duty, but one needed to be done nonetheless.
We now turn to council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. Counsel? Want to take a quick recess while the chamber empties?[1045.58]
Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order and we'll turn now to council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. Council? No, we couldn't get them done. Any council announcements at this time? I'd like to make one announcement so the community is aware of an event coming up a week from today. It will be the one-year anniversary of September 11. And the city of Palm Springs has joined a number of organizations, from the Red Cross to neighboring cities, Desert Hot Springs, and a number of corporate sponsors, to provide an opportunity for anyone within the Coachella Valley to join us in a memorial observance of the September 11th. We will be holding the event in the Angel Stadium at Sunrise Park. The event will begin with a pre-concert that starts at 6:30 in the evening. The formal event will start promptly at 7:00, and the duration is expected to be roughly one hour. The seats available are those within the stadium. We are not allowing people to sit on the infield, and you really won't see, per se, the event itself by being outside the stadium. So if you have the ability to join us in a relatively solemn, but I think very important event, we'd appreciate your attendance. We have been very fortunate thus far in a number of the RSVPs we've received. Elected officials from around the valley are joining us in supporting the valley-wide endeavor. And we have had invitations extended as far as the council general offices in Los Angeles, and to date, we have seven council generals joining us from a number of nations around the world. Two more came in today. And if you have the opportunity to clear your calendar for Wednesday night, I would suggest, if it's possible, to bring your family, your children. Come as early as you can. The gates open at 5:30. We have been fortunate enough to have water donated to us, so there will be water on site. We recognize the fact that it's a warm summer evening, so we hope you dress appropriately, and it is an outdoor event, but if you can make the event, please join us in remembering what happened to us one year ago. So with that, I'd like to, again, extend invitations. There will be a number of ads in the newspaper, and there'll be some media and so on and so forth, but we thought we'd take this opportunity to let everyone know of the event coming up. Are there any council comments, agency reports, or announcements at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges.
I think we should put on a future agenda renaming Palm Springs Stadium to Angel Stadium. We all still continue to use it.
There you go. Anything else? Then we'll go to item 15 is the first of our items on the legislative calendar. Item 15 is the City Council review of the Bureau of Land Management Draft California Desert Conservation Area Plan Amendment for the Coachella Valley and the Draft Santa Rosa and Santa Sinto Mountain Trails Management Plan. I'll turn now to Mr. Evans, I imagine, for his staff report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an item that's a document prepared by the BLM. It's a fairly lengthy document. We gave the council some key portions of it in your staff report. There are a number of areas that we would suggest that the council provide comment to the BLM. The BLM management plan only affects land administered by the Bureau of Land Management. It does not affect private land directly. It does not affect other agency-controlled land, although clearly, the federal government tries to coordinate with state and federal resource agencies. The plan amendments focus on the Coachella Valley, and the report that we prepared for the council tonight really focuses in specifically on the issues in the city of Palm Springs. The key items that were addressed, and I'm going to work primarily off of page 15A71, motor vehicle area designations. This is areas that, on BLM land, where off-road vehicles would either be permitted or prohibited. The two areas in Palm Springs that are addressed would be Wendy Point and the Whitewater Preserve. That's actually the Fringed Toad Lizard Preserve area. We would recommend that the council endorse the closure. That's consistent with city ordinances and policies relative to off-road vehicle use. With regards to, there is a consideration for a park on the east end of the valley, and the recommendation that the City Council would support that evaluation. It's not a project yet, but it's something that's being looked at. If you don't have a place for off-road vehicle use, it will occur somewhere, and a designated area is probably a good alternative to be explored. The second area that we've included in the draft recommendations is the Dunn Road area. The council's been involved in a number of items. The council actually filed some legal briefs relative to a lawsuit between the BLM and the Center of Biological Diversity and Sierra Club, where a very quiet settlement agreement was entered into that threatened even the ability of governmental agencies to have access to Dunn Road for legitimate government purposes. One of the issues they're addressing is allowing government agencies to have access to this property for government purposes. We certainly think the council should support that. And as opposed to individual right-of-way permits to each agency or entity for the same road, maybe all government agencies should have one right-of-way grant. Again, that's for police, fire, code enforcement, and other types of activities that the city undertakes as the government entity that has regulation of private land. One of the items that, in reviewing this report today and talking to some people about this, we might want to make a statement that's not in this. I could add it if you would like, that the Palm Springs General Plan does call for vehicular access into Dunn Road for private development purposes. We might want to just preserve that as a position. I did, in the staff report, outline my belief, after looking at land ownership south of Murray Hill, and I'll point that out in a moment, that the land ownership patterns have changed dramatically since 1993 and prior, when we had the Palm Hills General Plan evaluated. And a good portion of that land that was privately owned is now publicly owned or conservation-controlled, and the likely of real residential development south of Murray Hill is unlikely. These concerns and restrictions do not affect the area of the Palm Hills specific plan proposal, the front portion of Palm Hills. Council recommendation also includes the possibility of having limited Jeep tours from the valley floor, as currently restricted because of that settlement agreement. They've got to come in from Highway 74. There probably is the ability, if you take a look at the science, to come up with a way to have Jeep tours from the valley floor up. Dunn Road will be one of the best ways to see the National Monument, and I know the National Monument Steering Committee and our Palm Springs advisor, former mayor Frank Bogart, has expressed that concern at his committee level, that there needs to be some access into the National Monument, and Dunn Road is one. The next area is bighorn sheep recovery. One of the points that I thought we should make is that we should encourage the BLM to keep asking for and require public review of bighorn sheep research information, capture programs, and augmentation programs. Both the city and the tribal council, and I believe the BLM, were surprised by the Bighorn Institute and the Fish and Wildlife Service releasing sheep in the city of Palm Springs without advance notice. It just happened. They gave very short notice. The results of that research should be shared publicly. In addition to that, we might want to put a position statement that the city has objected to the recovery plan, that we have concerns about critical habitat, and that we reserve the right to maintain those levels of concern. That's not in the draft, but again, in discussing this, that might be something that the council might like to add in, and I could add in that if you would like. The last item on bighorn sheep that you might want to add, I put some language in the staff report on page 15A4 regarding augmentation programs. That's where they, again, release sheep into the wild. And I did something kind of scary. I played with the computer myself, and I deleted some of your recommendations. The two paragraphs in the middle having to do, expressing concern about the recovery plan, critical habitat designation, the economic study that was prepared by Fish and Wildlife Service, capture and release of sheep that have different behavioral patterns in the Santa Sinto Mountains could bring the sheep down into our backyards. They currently, in our mountain range, the Santa Sinto Range, don't come down. The sheep that were released over there have been known to be down very low and in urban areas. That could create a problem, could actually jeopardize the sheep. We don't think everybody's really evaluated that. I would suggest that those two paragraphs on page 15A4 be incorporated into your recommendation. I hit delete at the wrong time, and they fell out, so it was intended to be there, and I apologize. Trail use is one of the key issues. The BLM did something that I think should be commended, and that is, they tried to develop a trails plan to meet a lot of objectives, and they worked very hard. We still think that they probably closed too many trails, too much area, as proposed. They're proposing to close 75% of the critical bighorn sheep habitat with seasonal closures to trail use. That's an awful lot of the area. So what we've suggested in here are keeping some trails open, objecting to such a wide closure, specifically adding in the Skyline Trail, which is the trail from the Desert Museum to the top of the tram, is an open trail. It just goes straight through an area. It's not heavily used. I don't think there's any information to support the closure of it, other than, you know, some biologists said, why don't we consider this for closure? I don't think the data's there. And then in the Palm Hills area, they have recommended that they close a lot of trails. They also, at our request, kept a lot open relative to being free from seasonal trail closures, and if the council would like to see the areas, I can show you those. The last area is wind energy. It's a simple comment. They referenced the county ordinance in the city of Palm Springs. We just want them to say the city ordinance. That completes, really, the recommendations. Our comments are advisory to the BLM. They can consider them in their decision-making process. On trails, that decision won't be made until the multi-species plan is completed and there's further environmental analysis. We're just going on the record early what our concerns are. The BLM would consider this information. It would also be very helpful for Mr. Bogart, who is our representative on the National Monument Committee, to have an outline of what the city's prime concerns are. I told somebody earlier, had I had the time, I could have written 20 pages of comments on this plan to articulate specifically what our concerns are. But I think this hits the high points. If you were to add the issues about Dunn Road, the stuff I accidentally deleted on bighorn sheep recovery, and those are the key issues. So if you could, if you'd like to approve Exhibit A with authorizing me to make some changes, we'll transmit that to the BLM tomorrow. If you'd like to see the trail areas in the BLM land, I can do that. I know it's late. It's your option at this time. You've had some diagrams in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you wish to see more on displays and exhibits? Are you comfortable with the staff's recommendation as presented, or do you have additional comments you'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges.
I guess I don't quite understand the city's position on bighorn sheep. I have never quite understood it. I don't know why we're so opposed to them. I don't know why we put so many stumbling blocks in front of them. We are not the experts on this. I would say the Bighorn Institute is, and I personally will not support this if we add those in, those two recommendations.
Thank you. The council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mills.
I think, I don't think, in the information that I've seen over the years at the planning commission level, there's been a lot of controversy as to who's the, who is the expert on bighorn sheep. And one of the things that makes it difficult to determine who the expert is, is sharing of information. The Bighorn Institute repeatedly has refused to share information with this city and other cities, that apparently they feel freely in sharing with other agencies. But until, you know, until everyone has all the information at hand, I don't think you can, you can assume that one person is an expert over another. And I do certainly think that, if you look at the development that's occurred down valley, Palm Desert, Ranch Mirage, where there are sheep that are killed on the highway, until they put up the fence just recently, yet they allowed development to go throughout that area, and yet they oppose properties or projects that we've proposed in this city. There's something there. And until we understand what the difference is between our problem, or our perceived problem in their case, and the difference in down valley, I'm going to, I'm going to continue to, to object to, to anything, or anyone, or any agency telling us that there is, that we have a recovery problem, or that we have other, that we have other problems. Certainly, I do understand that there, that there is a bighorn sheep problem. Why there's a problem, no one has come for, well, there have been several theories, and one theory appears to me to be as good as the other unless you can substantiate it otherwise. I think that we are certainly entitled to develop the properties within our city equivalent to what other properties are throughout this valley. And that, I think, has certainly been, been my objection to, to the Bighorn Institute's attitude for, for one, and also with the attitude of several other agencies.
Doug, in the case of sheep augmentation plans based on capture and release, or they are raised in domestic pens and then released into the wild, what's their success look like? As of all the sheep they let go, what's the standing that you know at this point?
Well, I'll focus on Palm Springs. You know, a few years ago, there were three sheep released in Palm Springs as part of an augmentation program. They were released, as I recall, in Tockwoods Canyon. Of the three sheep that were released, none of them currently exist in the Santa Sinto Mountains. Two were killed, as it's been told to me, by predators, probably mountain lions. The other one was not doing well and was recaptured and taken back to the Bighorn Institute. It was an older female sheep that never really worked back into the herd. That's the only information that's been made available relative to augmentation. Obviously, the Bighorn Institute just released some additional sheep into the Santa Sinto Mountains, so we've asked that they keep us apprised of what their program is. The BLM has asked that that information be provided to them as well as be shared with the public. I think the city's goal in our general plan has been to do things to recover and help recover sheep. The issue is, when you take a look at the sheep distribution in the city of Palm Springs, many areas that they claim as significant habitat are areas that there is very little current or historical information relative to actual activity. And if you take a look at the magnitude of the mountains around the Coachella Valley and sheep habitat, the question is, if we're trying to finish out our community around the edges and maintain trails, does 100% of that land, and that's what we're being told in most cases, have to be undeveloped? The Chino Cone area, if you looked at the recovery plan and the critical habitat plan, we could not develop virtually anything above Little Tuscany and that area, that it's all is needed for sheep recovery. If you take a look at the Palm Canyon area, some good areas down there can't be developed in areas surrounded by development. The northern Palm Hills area, very little sheep information and activity, and yet we're told that, you know, that will have a significant impact on the sheep. In many cases, the agencies that tell us that have permit authority, and one of their real concerns is they probably don't have permit authority. So they create a very difficult environment. We've asked the Bighorn Institute for 10 years to help share information. You know, when they share it, they share it at midnight, 2:00 in the morning, at the last public hearing before the city council, and they give us raw data that you can't even interpret unless you have a computer program. And they say, there's the proof, and you can't even review it. We'd love to see that information. I make regular and routine requests to Mr. DeForge to share information. Normally, we don't get even a response to the letters. A nice "no thank you" would be at least a response. We normally do not get any response from that entity.
This city and this council have had a goal, a drive, to try to get proper development in the city of Palm Springs, and we have consistently found that there are certain parameters that we are faced with that other communities are not. There are certain obstacles in our path that others don't seem to have to challenge themselves to resolve. And what I'm asking for is that we be at least considered in all of these issues on an equal playing field. What I find to be a little bit concerning, at least in the report, with the removal of those paragraphs that were mentioned earlier, is that it lessens our ability to demand an equal and equitable playing field, that we cannot concede on any front because it erodes our position. We have had very little success. We have begun to find ways in which we have now incrementally moved closer to solution by putting pressure on, and I would suggest that we try to continue that same pressure. On the issue of sheep augmentation, one of the biggest concerns I have is, who provides the authority to whom to release what into the wild? I mean, if someone decided to release an animal because they thought it'd be good for the environment, who determines that? What authority says it's okay? Where is it? What science backs it up? One of the conditions of concern I had in the last sheep augmentation is that no one was aware of it, no one was providing any data. BLM had concerns, the tribal council and the Indians had a number of concerns, and somehow, they managed to get sheep released without providing anybody who is part of the regional pool of intelligentsia any data to substantiate the need, necessity, or even the validity of said such augmentation efforts. And to this day, I still find it somewhat frustrating that those who are trying to help in certain areas have done nothing to help all of us that are trying to get things done. So again, my concern is to keep a very strong and consistent stance and position from the city council, that we have concerns about what people do to our mountains without checking with us first. And by closing off trails and allowing augmentation to occur without our authority is something that I am not willing to give up at this time. If we're gonna allow us to move forward, as you said, on the fringes, the eventual development that will come to a halt at some point because of the mere geography that we, uh, surrounded by, I think we have to battle for those things that we have already, in many cases, approved, and in other cases, have encouraged. And we don't stand alone, it's a partnership with our neighbors, the Aguacalientes, who have also concerns about development in certain areas, that address these concerns in a very different way, a different manner, and under different governmental requirements. But again, the consistency of our stance should be indeed something we take consideration in voting on tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Um, I'd like to, to know, um, in, in this particular process, um, the role of the tribe and what input they have given, is it's the same as what they have shared with us in our joint meetings?
On this particular plan, um, I don't know what the tribe's specific comments are. They do have a cooperative management agreement, uh, with the tribal, uh, council, so I don't know the specific comments on this plan. I can tell you on the trails part of the plan, um, the Aguacaliente, uh, or tribal council had their planning directors submit a letter that basically parallels what these recommendations are, and that is, the tribe's going to keep the trails open on Indian land, that they don't see the, the data to support to close them at this point. And as a result of our comments and the tribe's comments, the alternative that's before you has a number of trails open from roughly the South Ridge area and Araby all the way back to Palm Canyon, uh, year-round, whereas the original proposal was to seasonally close those. Um, and we just asked the BLM, "Please go back and look at the sheep data because we don't think you're gonna find much activity over there." Um, and the BLM looked at that, got the tribe's comments, changed the plan. Um, we're not sure what the environmental community might say. But, so we've tried to work closely, but I don't know exactly what their comments are on the plan as of today, other than the trails letter.
And what about the equestrian trails, as opposed to, um, the more recreational ones?
Well, most of, most of our trails are joint use. The city, uh, Palm Springs is the only entity that's actually prohibited bicycles on certain trails because of conflicts with horses. Uh, we've worked very carefully with the desert riders, uh, both in the committees, uh, with their attorney, with their trails fund. I briefed, uh, their attorney and, uh, their trails fund representative last week about these comments. Uh, we provided the council with a letter, and they're much more technical and aggressive regarding maintaining the trails from a legal perspective. Uh, they feel threatened, they've been building and maintaining trails for over 60 years. I think we're consistent with, with their recreational needs, and we've been very careful to work with the Desert Riders Trail Fund in all the committees that we participated in.
Well, my concern, um, with, with, with some of the recommendations that, that they have proposed is that, um, I think it lacks inclusion. One, uh, a few years ago, I guess when we were doing the, um, Mountain Falls, and we received all of the information on, on the, on the sheep, and I read a lot of information about the sheep. And I asked a lot of questions, um, at that public hearing, which they either refused to answer or couldn't answer based upon the last-minute information that they provided us with. I think if they are, if they're going to assume the role of preservationists, I think that's a good thing, but I think we all need to, to work together toward that goal. And their position with proprietary information and not sharing anything, I think only hurts all of us in the long run. But I am specifically concerned about how their decisions affect our ability to develop and to maintain what we already have. So I, I support our recommendations.
Is that a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to, uh, make sure that the motion and the second include, uh, the additional comments that Mr. Evans made.
Yes, they do.
Motion and a second for the comments or questions. Ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
No.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Reller Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes 4-1. Turning now to item 16, the 2001 California Codes and 1997 Uniform Codes, 2001 California Building Code, and the 2001 Fire Codes. Mr. Ready, your staff's report, please, sir.
Oh, yes, thank you. Members of council, this is, uh, regarding additions, amendments to the, uh, fire and building codes, uh, based on uniform codes within the valley. Uh, Mr. Duckworth, our acting, uh, building code, actually, he, actually, he's here with Carl Tebow, the fire inspector. The both of them can brief counsel on what the issues are if you need some, uh, further details.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I will move the memorandum and the resolution and the two ordinances, uh, which, the clerk will read the title and waive the text.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Oden and second by Ms. Hodges. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Mills?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would, uh, like to compliment, uh, Mr. Duckworth, the building department, uh, uh, and, um, unfortunately, there's nothing to do with fire here, Carl, so, sorry. But there, there has been a little, uh, a, a pet peeve item of mine and several other people for years and years about the fact that we're the, we're, I think, the only city in the world where you cannot dump condensate water from your air conditioning unit into the sewer system. Now we can. Thank you, Mr. Duckworth and building department.
Well, that just surcharged the wastewater treatment plan. I mean, that's just terrible. And I'm just glad to see that aluminum conductors are finally have some limitations on it. That's an old line. Eh, that's an old joke, you'll get it later. All right, any further comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll ask for a roll, please. I'll ask you to please read the title waiving text.
Yes. And the first instance, this would be an ordinance of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending the Palm Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 11.02, adopting by reference the 2001 California Fire Code, incorporating and amending the 2000 Uniform Fire Code Volumes 1 and 2, including all supplements and appendices thereto, with certain amendments, additions, deletions, and exceptions. And the second one would be an ordinance of the city of Palm Springs, California, adopting and amending the 2001 additions of the California Building Code with appendices, Chapter 3, Division 4, 4, Division 2, 12, Division 2A, 15, 18, 31, Divisions 2 and 3, 33 and 34, Division 3, the California Mechanical Code, the California Plumbing Code, the California Electrical Code, and the 1997 additions of the Uniform Housing Code, Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, Uniform Solar Energy Code, Uniform Swimming Code, Spa and Hot Tub Code, and the Uniform Administrative Code.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Burgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Unanimous 5-0. Item 17 is Neighborhood Traffic Calming Programs, a Comprehensive Fee Schedule Amendment. Mr. Ready, your staff's report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a very good example of good policy that's responsive to the neighborhoods and citizens. Based on the directions you've given me some time ago, dealing with neighborhoods and neighborhood participation through our Office of Neighborhood Involvement, what's before you this evening is a culmination of a lot of work of residents, citizens of all types, organizations, and of course, legal, engineering, and yourself. Uh, this, this whole program before you, uh, we ask you to vote for in its entirety, does a couple of things. One, it gives us a process. When neighborhood citizens have issues with traffic on their streets, we have a set process to help give them relief. Uh, second of all, it has avenues that goes extraordinary ways to allow us to help neighbors, but at the same time protects people on other streets who it might impact adversely. Uh, that being said, uh, what we have before you is a, is this, this program that has options, and it has abilities, and it has avenues, and it has pathways, and it has a lot of good things that we think will help the neighbors. That being said, we've done several pilots. We've had, uh, pilot programs in the Sunny Dune Street, on Mesquite, on Ramone. Uh, those neighborhoods, particularly some of the more organized ones, Tennis Club Deepwell, have received these traffic calming measures. And for the most part, I think we've been able to satisfy many of those individuals. Uh, with that in mind, this policy that's before you is an outgrowth of all those meetings and pilot programs and that kind of discussion. So I would finally just like to note that the program that you have is a lot of work done by our city engineer, David Barakian. It's a, a very good program. He, he's taken information from many sources, um, and crafted this policy that works for our city. So with that, I would ask David Barakian to come forward to answer any specific questions you might have, but as you recall, it has been discussed in the, um, study session. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ready. Mr. Barakian, how are you this evening?
Just fine, thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to that report?
Just that staff is, uh, very excited about this program, and, uh, should council choose to, uh, adopt it tonight, we're ready to go to work tomorrow.
Very good. Counsel, questions or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
Excellent staff report, excellent job, good community involvement. With that, I will move the minute order and the resolution.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Oden and second by Ms. Reller Spurgeon. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Burgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 5-0, it's deemed unanimous. Item 18 is the City Attorney's Contract for Services. I'll turn to... Turn to anybody for a staff report? No? Turn to the council for direction?
You, I mean, I...
Please, Mr. Asher.
The, as a part of the budget, uh, presentation, we, uh, requested a, uh, modification to our fee schedule. The, uh, finance director estimated that the cost of the increase would be about $30,000. At that point in time, we, um, suggested that we could defer, uh, the increase for a six-month period, uh, which would, uh, would have reduced the increase, uh, to, by a third or a half, something like that. At that point in time, when we were looking at the budget, uh, there were some issues that, um, the, we were having trouble funding everything. One of the items you were trying to fund was a, uh, coming up with a new mining ordinance, uh, which was estimated to have a cost of $10,000. And at that point, I, for some reason, offered to work up an ordinance without charging you. Uh, Doug and I have had a couple of meetings. There are materials concerning the Granite Mining Pit, uh, that, uh, when we annexed that area, uh, there were some issues, uh, concerning the compliance of that mining pit with state law, and the state has actually assumed jurisdiction over that mining operation. And we can't really get our jurisdiction back until we come up with this mining ordinance. So, um, basically, I've gone through the file, looking at those materials, and, uh, it just so happened this week, we met with Granite. Uh, Granite is very anxious to have the city, um, assume jurisdiction. Uh, they're not happy with having to make the trips up to Sacramento and deal with the issues up there, so we, we have gone forward with that. So, uh, for, the, the city council was, I think, also interested in some evaluation issues with the city attorney, and there have been some sessions held on that. I do want to assure the council that, uh, our current agreement actually doesn't have a, uh, ending date. Uh, the, the draft we've done here simply, uh, the only change from your current agreement is the change in the, uh, fee schedule. Also, working with the finance director, we've actually decreased the fee schedule with respect to, uh, bond financing issues. So, um, the contract, um, adjusts the, uh, rates commencing, um, in, uh, January. The adjustment is, uh, it's been a couple of years since we had an adjustment, and the percentage increase is less than, uh, other adjustments that have been made. Uh, the reduction in the, uh, bond finance schedule would be immediate and not, um, that wouldn't part, does not wait until January. In any event, I do want to assure the council that in terms of the, uh, evaluation process, uh, the council is free at any time to, um, give their two cents worth through an evaluation process and let us know, uh, what you feel. And, uh, if at any time the council is interested in discontinuing the services, there's, uh, there's no buyout, there's no lengthy provision. Uh, you will find that we will be the easiest people to get rid of that, um, you would ever experience. You won't have to go through some of the situations that we've occurred in the past. But in any event, uh, this is, I, my perception is this was really a follow-up to the, uh, budget, uh, conversation, and doesn't really change the, uh, fundamental contractual relationship, which remains within the discretion of the council to adjust at any time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Asher. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the minute order.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Hodges and second by Ms. Reller Spurgeon. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I will not be supporting the renewal of this contract. It's come up several times, and I will just say, um... That I think that, um, the city attorney has done many good things for our city and for this community. And yet, along the way, um, the perception in the community, um, is that he functions more as a deal breaker rather than a deal maker. And, um, that's been a campaign issue for at least six years, that has come up in the various, um, forums throughout the community. I had a long talk with, with David recently about some of these issues, and in, in all fairness, I think that some of the perception or the misperception, uh, is to be owned by the council. But, that said, um, I think that the perception is, is still there, and I think that if we are planning to develop a business-friendly, uh, persona, uh, as of who we are, I think that there's some things that will need to change and that we will need to do some things differently. So, um, in spite of the fact that I can say some good things have been done, I think that it is time to make a change, and my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Other counsel comments? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills?
I think, uh, although I, I mean, I, I, I certainly un- understand and agree with points that, uh, Mr. Oden has made, and, uh, and he and I, and, and Ms. Hodges, probably, particularly with the, within the last few months, having, uh, been involved in the, uh, election process, probably got, uh, got our arms pulled to the side and talked about, about problems in the, out of the city attorney's office, whether they be real or, 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 or perceived. I, I understand some of them, I agree with some of them, I don't agree with others. Uh, I do think, though, that, um, that, uh, changing the city attorney is a very difficult, uh, decision to, to undertake, and that there is a, a history here that, uh, um, is second to none, and, uh, I don't really see how it could be re- replaced. And I'm certainly not saying that that's a reason to, uh, to extend the contract, but I do feel, um, being, being, uh, a new body up here on the, on the council level, and I think it is the council's responsibility, when we do see, uh, problems, perceived or otherwise, in, in the, in, uh, in the, uh, the way a, uh, employee, if you want to refer to it that way, one of the council's only two employees, uh, that it is the responsibility of the employer, in this case, the council, to instruct, uh, evaluate, and, um, to, uh, give that employee the opportunity to live up to the, to standards that the, that the council, in this case, feels are, are appropriate. And I, uh, I will be supporting the, the, uh, the...
And I, I will be supporting the, the contract, and I do feel that Mr. Alshire will be responsive. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. I will state, at least from my perception, that Mr. Alshire basically performs in the way in which we allow him to perform. That it is the job of the five of us to review Mr. Alshire, give him critiques, correct his behavior. It needn't wait for an annual review, although out of fairness, any employee should get at least an annual review. David is available at any time to be criticized. I know that because I take whatever opportunity I can to help him to perform a better job. And I know he appreciates those personal times together with me. Sometimes they're private, other times there's no time to go private. But for the most part, I would suggest to you that the job that Mr. Alshire holds, along with so many of the jobs in city government, is not an easy one. That we establish priorities, we establish the view, the vision, the goals, the priorities for the city we love so much, and we instruct our staff to then go forth and implement them. Whether it's a police officer dealing with law enforcement because we want speeds adhered to, or it's planning, saying we don't want that caliber of construction, or it's the city attorney being told, we don't want that deal. We want certain deals to generate certain kinds of revenue. And everyone is an individual, and that's why we hire these people, because of their individuality and their intelligence and their performance. I think the city of Palm Springs, along with the other cities that David represents and his firm, are very fortunate to have a man of such great caliber and experience. David has, as Mr. Mills indicated, tremendous institutional memory when it comes to Palm Springs, from a personal, along with a professional standpoint, which is difficult to replace. That does not suggest that he has a job for life, but it is a valuable asset that he alone does indeed possess. And it is to our advantage to have such an asset on our team. Do David and I always agree? Oh, no. Oh, no, not a chance. But I have never been afraid to tell David where I stand and why I stand that way. And to David's credit, regardless of the positions we both have in this organization, he is strong enough to say to me, "Mr. Mayor, I think you're wrong, and here's why." And then to the strength of debate, through persuasion, through articulation, he will then try to prepare me for his argument. And then it's for me to either accept it or challenge it. David is like anyone else. If told enough times, and I use that phrase, he will change and/or correct a behavior. He will tell you why his behavior is the way it is. In the nature of the responsibilities that we have charged him with, we have given him, for all practical purposes, the task of being the city's negotiator on deals, major deals, large deals, legal issues. And that is not a job where you walk in whistling, trying to make sure everybody's happy. What he tries to do is defend in some real harsh environments against some pretty substantial adversaries, and they are indeed adversaries. They didn't come here to help us, they came here to take what they can from us. And Mr. Alshire will defend the best possible deal for us. Does he make everybody happy? No, but no one makes everybody happy. It's not what this job is all about. It's not about making friends, it's about making decisions that are best for the city of Palm Springs. And I will always enjoy and respect and honor the work that Mr. Alshire and his firm has and continues to do for the city of Palm Springs. I am pleased that we are at least at a point where we can deal with this contract. And an evaluation is due him, out of respect, whether we choose to do it at the next meeting we had indicated in closed session. We'd like to schedule for our next week's closed session to perhaps give us half an hour of the council and Mr. Alshire to go through the details of, of our concerns and give him some critique. But again, you, you don't have to wait for the review period. David will accept your comments and tell you why he's doing what he is, and then amend as necessary his behavior. All he needs is three of us to say, "Don't do that anymore, do this." And if he's been doing something contrary to what people perceive to be in the best interest of Palm Springs, it's because we have not voiced to him the instructions to change that behavior. He is simply a servant to the council and ergo to the city. So he is what we make him and allow him to be. It's my pleasure to work with you, sir. You have a motion and a second? No further comments, I'll ask for a roll.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
No.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Flintings?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
It's okay, I know.
Four one, sir. You're with us until the next time we talk about you.
That's at least two weeks.
That's some kind of reassurance, huh? Item nineteen is additional legislative items. Mr. Ready, do you have any at this time?
Uh, there are none.
Thank you. Are there any added starters?
There are none.
Thank you. Under reports or requests, city council, reports or requests?
Yes.
Mr. Oden?
Yes, um, I would like a, a report from the recreation department on the type of information that we hand out to the community, um, and the information that we send through the school districts.
You want a report or the actual documents that are sent out?
Just more, more or less a report. And if they, if we send out things systematically at certain times of the year, those, I'm, I'm primarily concerned about recreational programs for children and how we communicate what we have to the community.
Is that hard copy and online service, sir?
Everything.
Thank you.
I would also like a report on, um, the status of Uptown and Downtown in terms of vacancies. Received some information about some of the businesses in the Uptown area, that perhaps there are some new things that are coming in. That's wonderful, I'd like to know what they are, when they're coming in, and how that affects our investment in our arts and antiques district, which we made an investment And also, a, an issue that deals with Francis Stevens Park. There've been a lot of shopping carts pulled over into that area that are left, and also a lot of public drinking by some of the people who I think are probably homeless. Francis Stevens. And I'd like to say that I, I think that this brochure, Public Art and Historic Site Tour Map, is outstanding, just outstanding. Very good.
Mr. Mayor? A couple of things. I would like for us to request of Caltrans to repave or slurry seal Vistacino. Cathedral City has done a wonderful job of redoing Vistacino in their city, and you come from there into our city and we look like a ragtag bunch of people that have cracks in their streets and everything else. I know it's not our jurisdiction, it's Caltrans, but I think we need to get on them so that we look equally as nice as Cathedral City does. Plus, it should function that way, anyway. I also realize that we're probably coming up on slurry seal time here pretty soon. But I think the reflectors in the street don't reflect, the red curbs aren't red, the green curbs aren't green. I think we need to do some work. I think we need to clean up our city. And it's probably in the budget, it's probably going to be coming up soon, but it's just a reminder on my part.
Additional council comments or reports or requests?
I will request that you do RSVP to Wednesday night's function so that we can deal with the head council, we're a week away, so if you can make a decision as quickly as possible. And if you need additional seating tickets, please let our offices know.
Okay? Any public reports or requests? Any staff reports or requests? Public reports or requests? Yeah, this is it. Yep, you got it. Two minutes.
Sorry I was in the wrong slot, but on my way home, I was mindful of Mr. Oden's search for the truth, Frank Tyson. So I decided to come back in, and when I walked back in, it says public, public comments, and that's why I came up here. So maybe please straighten out with the broadcasting people to put up the proper, proper title. I actually tried to stay away from here because it's usually very negative to come up here. And the only reason I came tonight, because I found it somewhat deceitful to have an agenda item, which only one could understand by knowing something about it and having the background material at hand. And I don't like to make a fool of, so I felt I ought to come back to clear up some issues. First of all, after two public comments that I made, none of you addressed the issue. Why are you giving taxpayers' money away to a multimillion-dollar corporation and a developer who agreed to pay for those improvements? I love medium strips, by the way, with all due respect to Ms. Hodges. But they agreed to pay for this. This was part of the deal, part of the approval, and you worked hard on this, and suddenly now you decide to give the money away. Are you afraid they're not going to develop it for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That's an issue, that's a question you have not answered. I'd like to, I think the public ought to know the answer to that one. The other one is the relationship of the general funds, which benefits from a public utility tax, and redevelopment money. It is related. Incidentally, redevelopment budget is a good way to keep items off the books, very much like Enron. But to get back to what Mr. Oden said, the state does not dictate that you have a redevelopment agency or redevelopment district. That is a choice that the city council makes. Now, there's other, one of the most successful cities in the valley is getting rid of the redevelopment agency for that matter. And I think that, that money doesn't come from heaven. You can create it, you can create the uncreated districts, and then the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars can go for police and fire instead of benefiting a major corporation.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the council during? Anyone else wishing to address the council during public reports or requests? Any staff reports or requests, Mr. Ready?
There are none.
Thank you. We have no study session scheduled for September eleventh due to the memorial service we're hosting. There will be a ballot education campaign workshop scheduled tomorrow on the fifth at five o'clock in a large conference room. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be September eighteenth at seven o'clock. And our next study session will be September twenty-fifth, also at seven o'clock. Both the regular meeting and the study session will be preceded by closed sessions starting at five thirty. Seeing no further business before the council, it is now nine, no, nine forty-five. Outstanding adjourned. Thank you and good night.